I'd like to call the September 2nd meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, will you call the roll?
Ms. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Sam?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Mugler?
Here.
Let the record show that all of our school board members are in attendance along with our division superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, and school board clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers, as well as members of our division leadership team. At this time, I'll turn things over to our student liaison tonight. Ciara Lewis is our alternate, and she's serving tonight. She's going to make some introductions for us.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call Madeline Mucklock up for the opening. Ms. Madeline Mucklock is a 5th grade student at Tucker-Caps Fundamental Elementary School, and she also is the state champ for balance beaming in Virginia. And she also gets honor roll in school, and she's a great student. And her father is now in the military, and she misses him, she says. And Ms. Madeline Mucklock will also give the invocation and lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Most of what I really need to know about how to live and what to do and how to be, I learned in kindergarten. Wisdom was not at the top of the graduate school mountain, but there in the sand pile at Sunday School. These are the things I learned: share everything, play fair, don't hit people, put things back where you found them, clean up your own mess, don't take things that aren't yours, say you're sorry when you hurt somebody, wash your hands before you eat, flush, warm cookies and cold milk are good for you, live a balanced life, learn some and think some, and draw and paint and sing and dance and play and work every day some, take a nap every afternoon, and when you go out into the world, watch for traffic, hold hands and stick together, be aware of wonder.
Those are very wise words. I liked kindergarten a lot. And actually, I'm so old that they didn't have public school kindergarten when I went to kindergarten. I had to go to a private school for kindergarten, but you do learn a lot of very valuable lessons there, don't you? Do you have some folks with you tonight?
Yes.
Would you like to introduce them?
Um, yes. I have my mom, Angela Mack, and then I have my stepdad, Angela Erp, Chris Mack, and then I have my sister, Mariah Mucklock.
Awesome. Would you all stand and be recognized? Thank you all for joining us tonight. Did you bring your principal with you, did I see?
Yes.
She might not have come with you, but she's here, isn't she?
Yes.
Would you like to introduce her?
Dr. McIntyre.
Madeline, what's your favorite thing about Tucker-Caps?
Um, well, the teachers are very nice, and it's a very healthy community out there.
Right. That's good to hear. Good things going on at Tucker-Caps, right. Well, thank you so much for being with us tonight.
You're welcome.
And have a great school year this year.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call on our Director of Marketing and Public Relations, Ms. Diana Galata, and she'll be assisted tonight by the school board member, Ms. Vilas Henry.
First, it's my pleasure to recognize Hampton's Clean City Commission for using their vast network of volunteers to spruce up our schools for the start of school. Their director is Debbie Blanton. Completed HCS jobs this summer include painting, pressure washing, courtyard improvements, outdoor classroom preparation, general grounds cleanup, furniture refinishing, and storage area organization. Our Clean City Commission will continue to be one of our most outstanding community partners throughout the entire school year with school pride in action, environmental education opportunities for students and staff, recognition of our schools for environmental efforts to include the annual Green Schools Awards, and the annual school appearance index survey through which volunteers visit all school sites to assess the overall appearance and provide feedback to drive continuous improvement. Thank you very much to the Hampton Clean Commission and Ms. Blanton for your tireless efforts on behalf of our students and our schools. If you could come forward now, Ms. Blanton.
I have to give Debbie a hug. Don't go away. The Hampton City School Board congratulates Debbie Blanton and the Clean City Commission for all of that they do as wonderful partners. This is for their summer volunteer partnership, but Debbie works all year long with teachers, with opportunities for kids, with recycling projects and contests, and all those Keep Virginia, Keep America Beautiful things. And if you're a science teacher, get to know this woman because she will help you and do all kinds of stuff for you, and it's just always a pleasure, and she's always as happy to. Congratulations.
Next, we would like to recognize Patricia Thompson, who is the Curriculum Leader for Health Physical Education and Family Life. Pat has been named the Virginia Association for Health Physical Education and Dance, also known as V A H P E R D Supervisor of the Year for the entire state of Virginia for 2015. Pat was selected for the award by serving as a positive role model epitomizing personal health and fitness, enjoyment of activity, sportsmanship, and sensitivity to the needs of the teachers and students under their supervision. To be considered, a nominee must also utilize various supervisory methodologies and plan innovative learning experiences for teachers, conduct balanced and sequential workshops and seminars for teachers, assume responsibility for her professional growth, and show professional commitment through membership and involvement in local, state, and national physical education organizations. Thompson has 25 years of experience in HCS with 10 years at Sims Middle School, 10 years at Jones Magnet Middle School, and five years as the curriculum leader. Pat will be recognized during the 2016 SHAPE Southern District Convention, February 10th through 13th, 2016, at the Williamsburg Lodge. Congratulations.
We all know how much focus and how much concern there is in our communities and on behalf of our parents for the wellness and health of our students. And if you ever want to know why Pat got this award, all you have to do is ask her any question about her teachers or her students and the programs in Hampton City Schools, and you will see the enthusiasm and the joy and the excitement about what she does every day. This says, "Achievement: Congratulations from Hampton City School Board, Pat Thompson, for being named the Virginia Association for Health Physical Education and Dance Supervisor of the Year." Congratulations from Ms. Mugler, our superintendent, and all the school board.
You have a group of supporters here, I think. We need to...
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
There they are. I do have a few people here supporting me tonight, and I appreciate you coming out in the weather and everything. And those people and the rest of the teachers who work so hard, they are some of the most dedicated professionals that I've ever seen, and they work tirelessly, and they make it a joy to help them progress and to help progress health and physical education in the city of Hampton. So, thank you.
Dr. Pat Johnson was one of your supporters who nominated you for this. I think we need to recognize her. Is this handsome gentleman out here? Okay, introduce her, perhaps.
Okay, yeah, of course, Dr. Johnson, who was my supervisor for five years and a great mentor, and Chuck Rigney is with me, my significant other, and then all my teachers that have come tonight, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we move to the winner of the 2014-2015 Technology Leadership Award. This prestigious award recognizes a school or department that is not only at the top of their game when it comes to technical ability, but also exhibits the best teamwork, leadership, creativity, and innovative spirit to make things happen with technology. In order to be considered for the Technology Leadership Award, employees from across the division are asked to submit nominations to the Department of Information Technology, who selects the winner based upon impact to student learning, improved effectiveness, and the nominee's approach to integrating technology into his classroom or work environment. You may recall that last year, our winner was Kickatan High School, who was selected because of their work to create the Student-Operated Technical Support Center. This year, the award goes to Sims Middle School. And here's just a few highlights from their submission. Teachers use a large number of applications on the iPads every day. Edmodo is used to upload study guides, NearPod for presentations, quizzes, tests, and to catch students up who are absent. The EduCreations app is used for do-nows, quizzes, drawing, and labeling content like atoms. Also used at Sims is Notability, where students put documents in PDF form so they can take notes on them. Students use their cameras to film lab reactions, plays, and other materials they create. The Google Docs and Google Drive allow the students to download documents that have been put up by the teachers. There are many, many, many more examples that were provided in their nomination, but one that stood out follows. Recently, a solar panel has been set up on the roof to charge iPads and laptops. The students can access it and charge up anything they want using solar power harnessed from the sun. Sims also has an active technology student association that competes regularly at the local, state, and national levels. We'd like to recognize the nomination submitters Andrew Perry and June Wright. They also recognize the following from their team: Amanda Jobson or Jobson? Jobson, thank you. Matthew Alexander, Connor Dunn, Brooke Winker, Cheryl McLaughlin, and Kim's Rig Pool. The majority of teachers at Sims use at least some form of technology listed above to make his or her classroom an engaged learning environment. Sims is under the direction of Principal Mr. Blanton. You all would come forward and accept this beautiful award.
I have to read it from this side. Technology Leadership Award, Sims Middle School, 2014-15. You know, there are a lot of people that said technology made it a lot harder to do all this work, and it's wonderful when we see you using tools to make learning so exciting for our students, and it had to be a team effort. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Somebody want to give you a shout out? Are you good? Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Galata. And congratulations again to all those who were awarded. Thank you so much to Debbie Blanton for all your work and cooperative efforts with Hampton City Schools, and congratulations to Pat Thompson, and again to all the staff at Sims Middle School for all the work you're doing in the area of technology. Congratulations again. We'll move on now to our consent agenda. It consists of four items tonight: our personnel report 15-17, minutes from the school board meeting of August 5th, 2015, minutes of the school board retreat of August 14th, 2015, and item 3.04, which is the certification of the closed session of August 5th, 2015. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pearson and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve this evening's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain because I missed something in there. I know I did. I'm just going to abstain the whole thing.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries.
We move on to superintendent and staff reports, and I'll happily turn things over to you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, members of the division leadership team will provide information relative to preparation for strong and smooth 2015-16 school opening. We'll start the presentation with Mrs. Bain, who will speak to us regarding community involvement and partnerships. We've heard some of that already this evening. And then, Mrs. Susie Scott will provide an overview of the work relative to our facilities, food and nutrition, and transportation as we prepare for the opening of school. And then, of course, as a part of this report, Mrs. Robyn Ruth will conclude the presentation by providing an update relative to the current staffing for the 2015-16 school year. So, thank you, Mrs. Bain.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler, Mr. Pearson, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share with you a bit about, along with my colleagues, Ms. Scott, Ms. Ruth, a bit about what we've been doing to prepare for a great opening of school. And Dr. Smith, you referenced that they'd heard a bit about it, but I think you can never hear enough about the tremendous support of this community, of our school division. This year, probably more than ever, some of you have heard me say that our community has really demonstrated that it not only understands every child, every day, whatever it takes, but they also understand that the beginning of our mission statement is in collaboration with our community. And this year, they have stepped up. They have dedicated their time, their talent, their treasure, and in many cases, their tenacity to make sure that our schools are ready, our students are ready, and our staff is prepared for an amazing school year. Ms. Galata stole my thunder a little bit with regard to the work of the Clean City Commission, but I do want to tell you a little bit of detail about what they've done. We talked about the fact that Ms. Blanton uses her really vast network of groups that are interested in episodic experiences of volunteerism, and we've done this for years, but this year, the response was just tremendous. And also, the wish list from our principals was really something robust as well. So, as you can see, there were, at least at the creation of this presentation last week, there were 19 facilities that had enjoyed some love from the Clean City Commission volunteers and their organizations, but that number keeps growing, so it could be larger today. 12 elementary schools, two centers, one combined school, and four middle schools. And of course, I won't belabor the kinds of work they did. Ms. Galata shared that, but if you take a look at the picture, you can see the beautiful facelift to the front of Lindsay Middle School, and while the front of the school looks fabulous, they also took the opportunity to add a few signs of school spirit. I do want you to know a little bit about the kinds of organizations who've been working at our schools over the last month or so. Those groups have included churches and houses of faith, and it's interesting, those groups have included youth groups as well as adult groups, and it's been wonderful to watch them working. You can see that bottom picture is actually a youth group from a house of faith in our community. It's included military organizations, and that's reflective of the Army, the Navy, and the Air Force, a number of businesses, our civic and social, and several of our neighborhood organizations. And I might share too, that I hope you all have had an opportunity to see the letter that was distributed by our Neighborhood Commission with regard to the open of school and neighbors and neighborhoods getting engaged with our schools. Additionally, there were Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and there was an Eagle Scout project as well. And I have to give a shout out to Parks and Recreation in general for the work that they've been doing to get our grounds ready. I went and visited a school today, and there was a crew working diligently. They've been mulching. All of our schools will be in tip-top shape with fresh mulch and beautiful grounds for the open of school for everyone. They've also been engaged in playground preparation and the inspection of our playgrounds, which is very important, and also replacement where appropriate. And this photograph is not really demonstrative at all of the work of the Parks and Recreation staff, but we wanted you to see, this is actually a group from Alcoa Halmet who are working on maintaining the beautiful outdoor learning environment at Armstrong Elementary So, not only are our buildings getting ready for school, but our community is making certain that our students are prepared with everything they need to be successful in their studies this year. Some of you had the opportunity to attend the first time back-to-school event that was hosted by the Ministers Coalition of Hampton and Vicinity. It was a great opportunity for parents to be included in some workshops, for young people to have a lot of fun, for us to share some information, and as you can see from the photo, an opportunity for young people to get backpacks. Let me tell you about this little family. All four of them are brand-new to Hampton City Schools, and they'll be starting at Phoenix pre-K through 8, where they'll all be able to attend school together, and they were delighted to get their backpacks. You can see how tickled pink they are. We also, once again, were the beneficiaries of the Waters Edge Church Stuff the Bus Initiative, and we received in excess of 20 really large packing boxes full of school supplies. We had student volunteers unpack the supplies, sort them, and then repack them so that we could distribute them to our schools. Most of our schools received offerings from Waters Edge Church. Tomorrow, we will receive another load of school supplies in a Stuff the Bus Initiative from Wavy TV10, and we'll distribute those. Well, we'll use students to sort, unpack, repack, and distribute to the remainder of our schools, and also share them so that we'll have things on hand when students run out of things throughout the beginning of the year. First Baptist Church, we give a shout out to them for their annual back-to-school event at which they share inspirational messages with the young people about the school year to come, and also provide them backpacks that are school-year appropriate with the supplies that they'll need to be successful. And this year, our superintendent, Dr. Smith, had the opportunity to make welcome remarks and really inspire the young people. He did a great job, and they had a really good time with him. And finally, this past weekend, the Fourth Annual Seeds Family and Community Resource Fair, and that has grown from a single event to an event at five sites. It is not only award-winning, but it is Neighborhood Commission grant-funded, and Shonda Epps and her team have done a great job. I think I read that they reached in excess of 500 Hampton City Schools families. And finally, I have to mention the individual school partnerships that we enjoy. You know, our individual schools are partnered with houses of faith, with units from Joint Base Langley-Eustis, businesses and others, and they're engaged in their individual projects to support their schools. So, some of our teachers have been treated to back-to-school breakfasts, back-to-school lunches. There's one going on on Friday, a lunch in a house of faith. There was one early this week. They've been engaged in beautification projects. They're all committed to our events for the open of school, and they too have been collecting school supplies. Excuse me, I'm a bit hoarse tonight. I did want to close, and I jotted this down because I really want to make sure that, you know, my heartfelt appreciation to our community is expressed. We are so fortunate, fortunate beyond measure, to be part of such a caring, collaborative community where citizens take ownership of our schools and where they demonstrate that they are invested in our children's success.
And Susie, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to continue with the next part, which is talking about our support services. And I can tell you that all of our support service departments have been very busy this summer. I'm not going to go through this. I don't expect you to be able to read them, but just so you have an idea of what the maintenance department has been doing this summer, they typically have a number of capital projects going on every summer. Obviously, when students aren't in school, it's the best time to get major projects going, so summer is always a very busy time for them. The major projects that we worked on were heating, ventilating, and air conditioning upgrades at Sims, Kickatan, and Lindsay, and then we had new windows put in at Cary and Barron. We currently have breezeways going in at Phillips and Tucker-Caps, so they will end up being the first two elementary schools to have both the new windows and the new breezeways when that project is completed late this fall. But you can see, we have a number of things going on. Most of them are finished at this point. There are a few that are still underway, small things, none of the major projects, and a few things that will actually get going during the year, but that won't be disrupting instruction. The summer cleaning was completed as of Sunday, the 30th, this past Sunday, so all of the schools are ready to roll from that standpoint. A few last-minute requests have come in from schools for assistance with different things, and we're trying to accommodate those as best we can. With the Food and Nutrition Services Department, they have sent home their free and reduced letters to all households as of about the second week in August. They're highly encouraging online applications. This is the second year that they've done this. They started that last year. They actually had a very good response rate last year for being the first year of the program. They, you know, provide little cheat sheet cards to all the schools. They provide them to the parents. They have a helpline. They have a place, a kiosk, where parents can come in and do it. So, they offer a lot of opportunities for parents to be able to do it online. However, if a parent wants a paper application, the schools and Food and Nutrition Services all have the paper applications available if they request it. We had six community eligibility schools last year. As you can see, Aberdeen, Bassett, Bryan, Cary, Lindsay, and Tyler. When Mrs. Forrest looked at the numbers and reevaluated the rest of the schools, she determined that there were three more that she thought would be eligible, and we recently got approval on those three, so we will be adding Andrews, Machin, and Sims. As you know, community eligibility means that a school that is approved under that is able to provide free breakfast and free lunch to all of its students, and there's no requirement for them to submit an application. So, this makes a total of nine schools for this year, which is wonderful. She has all staff, or had, as of this point, all staff training on September 1st and 2nd. She has a big focus on customer service and food quality. She started that initiative last year. She's continuing it, trying to make sure that both the service and the food is top-notch and consistent across all of our schools. And she is hoping to provide a number of training opportunities. They moved to Turant, or well, they'll actually be moving this month, but they held their training at Turant, and they hope to have some additional training opportunities there with their kitchen. We have some capital projects, so to speak, going on with Food and Nutrition Services this summer. They have some new serving lines at Asbury, Booker, Tucker-Caps, and Moton. We have some new walk-ins, which are the giant refrigerators at Moton, Cooper, and Asbury. Phoebus is scheduled for a major kitchen renovation. The bids will start in January with a completion of next summer. And then, there's a continued focus on just trying to update the equipment throughout the division. This is, she's just starting the beginning of her second year, so she took... so she took all of last year to kind of assess all of the schools and what they had and where they were. And so now she's focusing on trying to do equipment updates where they're needed the most and just kind of working her way through. Transportation. Transportation has been a busy little hub of activity this summer. They are fully staffed for the school year. They have drivers for all of their routes. Currently, 154 full-time drivers. And then substitutes, we have contracted full-time attendance and part-time. There are between 150 and 170 bus routes. And as you know, our routing guru, Paul Moser, does his best to optimize those and make sure that they are the most efficient routes that we can come up with. They have done a successful DMV audit of their CDL training. They are authorized to do the training of new applicants, and they were very successful in that audit. So that was wonderful. The web query is live for 1516. Parents are able to go out and look up their bus stop location and time. If they have any questions, obviously, they can call Dispatch and find out if they don't see their stop or if they're not sure they understand it. Dispatch, the call center, is open, and they can call in and get information on that. And they had their in-service training on August 19th at Hampton High School, at which Dr. Smith and I were both privileged enough to be able to make some remarks, and it was a great turnout. The call center did open on August 24th, so we're halfway through the second week of the call center. All of the drivers participate in practice runs. They all get out there. We have some new supervisors, and so this was a learning experience for the supervisors as well. But we do this every year. The drivers get out there, they get their routes, they do practice runs to make sure that there aren't any unforeseen problems on the route, something they didn't expect, and to give them an opportunity to just kind of get the feel of their route and know where they're going for that first day. So those were very successful. And the transportation supervisors and administrators met on the 25th with principals to discuss, you know, the upcoming year and how principals can help them and how they can help principals to have a successful school year. And now I'm going to turn it over to Robin Ruth, and she's going to talk to you about staffing.
Good evening. And I am very excited to give you our most recent staffing update as of about 5:00 this evening. We have four full-time positions that are still open. We do have, it's two special ed, one language arts, one science position. We have offers pending for language arts and special ed, so I expect that by 9:00 tomorrow morning, we should have those filled. We do have candidates available, and principals are set to do interviews for the other two positions. So I do expect that we will be fully staffed on Tuesday, September 8th. So that's very exciting. The other thing that we had wanted to share with you is a little bit of an update on professional development. There has been a lot of learning going on amongst adults in Hampton City Schools this summer. And so there are just a few things that we wanted to share with you. In no way, shape, or form am I going to be covering all of the learning that has gone on this summer. So these are just a few of the highlights and some things that we've done differently this year. With Summer Leadership Academy, which is an annual event that we have done for years, did things a little bit differently this year. The instructional folks met with administrators at the end of June to take a look at student data and results within the schools and to look at school learning plans so that they could spend the summer focusing on things they needed to do to take their schools to the next level. We met back up with the administrators in August and again focused on maximizing learning as well as culture and climate. Because if we don't have a culture and climate in place where students feel safe and ready to learn, then all of the great instruction is not going to be as effective. So those were kind of our two focuses. This was our fifth year for Rejuvenate. This is a wonderful teacher-led opportunity for professional development. It's teachers teaching teachers. It's a Title I activity, but they have been able to share with the rest of the teachers in non-Title I schools. For the first time this year, we were also able to grow it up to the middle school level. So that was very exciting. And like I said, it's wonderful to see the teachers helping each other to grow. New teacher orientation. We again took a different approach to this. Teacher orientation in the past could be compared to kind of like drinking out of a fire hose. And we would fill our new teachers with all the information they'd need to have a successful year. And then they'd get into their classrooms, and what they really needed was what do they need to be successful in their first week in school? What do they need for the first two weeks? So we've really streamlined it and have gotten fantastic feedback that teachers did not feel nearly as over. It is still overwhelming to be a first-year teacher, but they didn't feel nearly as overwhelmed. And the orientation will extend throughout the school year. We already have professional development opportunities scheduled for all of our new teachers as well as mentors. So we've been excited about that. There's also been curriculum-specific training, and these are just some pictures from various training events. We also had Technology Camp in June, which is all about infusing technology into instruction. So I think it's just important, not only were we preparing buildings, but our teachers, you know, a lot of people talk about, oh, they get their summers off. Well, a lot of our teachers spent all summer learning so that they'd be ready to teach the children next week. And with that, any questions for the three of us?
Questions?
I get to answer all the questions? Oh, thank you. That could be dangerous.
They can join you back up there. Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I just have one question. First, it looks like we're off to a great start. So thank you all so much. I did have one question regarding food service. I know touring a lot of the elementary schools last year, there was a big issue with cafeteria monitor turnover, ability to fill those positions, and a lot of teachers having to work their lunches, which I didn't like to see. Is there something being done to address that, a change of any kind?
One thing that we started doing late last year, towards the end of the school year, was using Source for Teachers to help us with filling in some of the vacancies, and that worked out really well. But they have worked very hard this summer trying to get positions filled. But they do have Source for Teachers to fall back on if they need some additional resources. So it's very difficult to fill these positions. They do get, you know, they recruit continually, and they get applications, but they aren't always successful in getting those to a hiring status. So they work on it continually, and they will continue to do that. But they have Source for Teachers as an additional backup.
Well, that's a good backup. I'm hoping we don't see the teachers having to do that this year.
Thank you.
We're hopeful.
Other questions from board members? Mrs. Henry?
Not a question so much as a comment, is that I think sometimes teachers feel like they're all being forced into the same box as far as training and professional development. And the thing that was so impressive about all the variety of offerings this year is that teachers had just a huge array of options they could do in person, online, in a workshop, with teachers, with other mentors, with other, just a great array of exciting topics that teachers would be, gee, I wish I could do five or six of these. Maybe I could do some later. They were wonderful topics and wonderful workshops, and a lot of variety in the delivery method. And so I think that that really makes professional development much more attractive to somebody who's not a beginning teacher and doesn't want to sit through from step 1 to 10 and maybe needs some help with step 7 and can focus in on what they know they want to do. So I really congratulate you all for offering teachers a great choice and variety of things that they feel they need.
Thank you. I'll share that with the organization effectiveness folks. They are working very hard. Just as we encourage teachers to differentiate instruction within the classroom, they're working very hard to differentiate instruction for the adults. Thanks for recognizing that.
Mr. Pearson?
Additional comment, Ms. Ruth? We all know that a large number of teachers leave education in the first three years. And a lot of them leave because they don't feel that they have the kind of support they need in the classroom. Just last week, I visited a school and talked to a teacher who will be teaching science in Hampton. She was very excited about having the opportunity to teach in Hampton, but she was equally happy to know that she had a support system in place. And she mentioned the mentor in the building that'll be working with her, and also another person that's going to be assigned to her as a mentor, so that, you know, before school even starts, she knows that she has the kind of support that she can go to these people and ask them questions. And so hopefully, she'll be successful. The first year, of course, is so crucial.
Yes, absolutely. This is the first year, our new teacher induction program will actually support teachers for their first three years of teaching with some pretty intense supports. And this is the first year of that rollout, so we're excited to see how things work out.
Other comments or questions from board member? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Chair. The next report within the superintendent's area is that of Business and Operations, and so it's a financial update. Is the Scott standing before us?
Switch gears here. Put my glasses on so I can see my little tiny print. All right. I am here to talk to you about our final report for fiscal 2014-15. So this is the results of our operations as of June 30th. These are unaudited statements, but the auditors are just about completed, have just about completed their work. And so we feel that there will be no significant adjustments and that these statements do materially reflect our final position for FY15. Our final revenues for the year were $195,319,387. This was just under $1.5 million under budget for the year. The state funds were under by about $766,000. And this is partly, actually mostly, due to the decline in enrollment that we experienced. We did not come in at budget for enrollment. The federal funds are under budget by about $558,000. This is largely due to Medicaid and some of the ROTC coming in under budget. And then miscellaneous funds are under by about $102,000, oh, excuse me, that's Medicaid, are under by about $102,000 for Medicaid, and indirect cost was over. If you look at the request for approval of categorical transfers, you will see that in total, we are requesting a categorical transfer into category 9 of $1,564,441 to cover technology purchases that were made as of year-end. We also made a significant number of textbook purchases, but because the majority of our attrition or remaining funds are in category 1, we didn't really need to transfer money to cover those. But category 9, we do need to transfer to cover the additional computer purchases. Most of those were for our refresh cycle of student computers and some teacher computers. And again, the total for that is about $1.5 million. The revised expenditures, unaudited, but again, we assure that they are reasonably accurate. And again, our unrealized revenue was just under $1.5 million, and we can't spend what we don't earn. So, and even with that, we are requesting, from the city going to be requesting, a carryover of $417,701. We want to allocate this to our Oracle Replacement, our Enterprise Resource Planning Replacement Project. As you know, the funds that we carried over this past year were dedicated to that. And as of year-end, we did have the major pieces of that encumbered. However, we still have some unknowns. We have some changes, some significant changes that will have to be made to our Kronos timekeeping system as a result of the changes that we're making to the semi-monthly payroll and also to a new system. We also have, through the process of discovery, which is still ongoing, that's part of the working with the vendor to go through all of the requirements. And there was an initial discovery, but as the vendor gets on board and you start having more intense meetings, sometimes you discover additional things that need to be done. Some of these can be picked up within the scope of work. Others require a modification to the scope of work and potentially an additional cost. There are also some additional, like single sign-ons, potentially some hardware and software purchases that have not been accounted for yet. And so we need this to help ensure that we can successfully get to our July 1st go-live date with all of these things. And then last but not least, and I'm certainly not going to go through page by page, but we have the detail of all of the categorical transfers that were made for June. And it's obviously considerably longer than a typical month. But as I've explained to a couple of people, June is really a process that goes on until the end of August. Closing out our fiscal year really does take two months because during that time, we're accruing payables and receivables. We're going through audit, we're making adjustments, and we're continuing to, you know, record revenues that are applicable to the prior fiscal year and expenses. And so we don't close out the books until the end of August. And based on that, we have to do a number of transfers as we're adjusting. Some of them were for year-end purchases, which are made based on requisitions submitted. When the requisitions either don't get processed for one reason or another, or they end up being modified so that they're for less money, or they get canceled because a delivery can't be made, then we end up transferring back some of the funds. So some of these transfers, it looks like they're, you know, going from here to here and back again. But we do make adjustments back when we have excess funds there and to true up our categories as of the end of the year. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Are there questions from board members on her financial report tonight? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Dr. Smith?
Madam Chair, that concludes reports in terms of superintendent and other staff members. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Smith. We move on to the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowers, I don't have any forms.
No.
Okay. We'll move on then to items for action. Beginning with item 6.01 on our agenda, minutes for the School Board meeting of August 19, 2015. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pearson and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve the minutes of the School Board meeting of August 19. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
I think I jumped the gun a little while ago. These are the minutes that I should be abstaining on.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries.
Moving on to item 6.02 on the agenda, certification of the closed session of August 19. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of action item 6.02.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve the certification of our closed session of August 19, 2015. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Abstain.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move on to the revision of a number of policies here, one, five policies. Would we like to take those one at a time or approve in a block?
I'll be happy to entertain a motion with respect to revision of School Board policy BBBC, Student Representative to the School Board.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the remaining action items as a block, that be action items 6.03 through 6.08.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve item 6.03, the revision of School Board policy BBBC, Student Representative to the School Board. Policy 6.04, the revision of School Board policy BBB, School Board Member Oath of Office. The revision of School Board policies BBFA and GBACB, Conflict of Interest. Revision of School Board policy BCG, School Board Attorney. Revision of School Board policy BDC, Closed Meetings. And the revision of School Board policy IIIBEA, Acceptable Use Policy. All these items were deliberated in two prior meetings. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to deliberation, we have six items on our agenda tonight for deliberation, beginning with item 7.01, voluntary contributions to the Hybrid 403B Retirement Plan. Are there questions from board members regarding the hybrid plan?
We were briefed on this at our work session. Any other questions with regard to this particular item? Okay. We'll move on to item 7.02, which is new School Board policy GAD, Access to Employee Social Media Accounts. We were briefed on this at our work session. Are there any questions or additional deliberation on this policy revision? There being none, we'll move on to the next item, which is policy JHG, Child Abuse and Neglect Reporting, formerly referred to as Reporting Child Abuse Policy. We were briefed on this at our work session. Are there any additional questions or deliberation? These are simple updates in the language and a title change. There being no further deliberation, we'll move on to item, the next item is policy GAE, Child Abuse and Neglect Reporting, I'm sorry. And this is a new policy. It mirrors policy JHG. Are there any additional deliberations or questions on this policy? Policy GBA, which is Equal Opportunity Employee Policy. It's an update in the language. Are there any questions or additional deliberative comments on this policy? There being none, we'll move on to the final item under deliberation, which is policy J E C A, Admission of Resident Children. And that involves additional of language regarding kinship care. Are there any questions from board members or any further deliberation on this policy revision? Okay. There being none, we'll move these policies forward to action at our next meeting. Moving on to deliberation first read, we have two items for first read tonight. The first being the revision of School Board policy JHCC and JBED, Communicable and Infectious Diseases. And, Ms. Ruth?
And I'll discuss all of them. There are changes, there are mirror changes in both the student section and the personnel section, and so I'm just going to go ahead and go through the changes for all of the policies. The updates are very minor language revisions as suggested by VSBA in their May 2015 update, and we are also including a reference to some policies with VDOE. And that's, those are the same changes for both GHCC and the next policy, GBED.
You mean JHCC?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members regarding this particular policy revision? Okay. The next item is 8.02, and that's policy GEB and JOH, Alphabet Soup, Acceptance of Electronic Signatures and Records. You'll brief us on this.
Correct. These are both new policies, and it's language around the acceptance of electronic signatures. As a school division, we are moving to more and more use of electronic signatures. In May, we used it for the first time with contracts and letters of employment. They were distributed electronically and signed and returned electronically, which was wonderful. And on the student side, we have used it for free and reduced lunch applications. I know we started with that last year, and so we just wanted to protect ourselves, and VSBA is strongly recommending all school divisions to do this as well.
Any questions for clarification on this particular policy? Which is a new policy, both two new policies. There being no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ruth. We'll move on to informational items. The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will be on September 16 at 6:30 p.m. That will be our work session at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street. Are there informational items from you, Dr. Smith?
Madam Chair, just a few updates. One, I think the first, to share that we're happy and delighted that today we launched our new website, and so we believe that it will be easier to navigate and certainly compatible with tablets and other mobile devices, and that it will provide stakeholders with more opportunities to give feedback to the division. So we are excited in that regard. Also, we will be launching a Hampton City Schools mobile app, which will enable individuals to really sign up for alerts, banner notifications, as well as provide access to other division school and student information. So we are also excited and would like to look toward Mrs. Gallata for her work and certainly the team members in that regard. And also to share that the first day of school for students, Tuesday, September 8, and we look forward to a successful school year. And then finally, helpful information regarding our school opening certainly is located on the division's website under the tab with our new website, The Area in the Know. And so we have information there regarding school supply or the supply list, open house and back-to-school night dates, as well as the times have been provided there or are provided there, along with registration information, bus stops, and more. So that concludes, Madam Chair, information from superintendent.
Thank you very much. Other informational items from board members? Mr. Samuels?
Yes, Madam Chair, thanks for this opportunity. I know Ann Bayne expressed her gratitude to the community and for the success of the CE program, but I had the privilege and opportunity to attend four of those sites this past Saturday, and it was a fantastic event to see those families engaged and attending the different workshops that were available for them to get as much information for themselves and their children. It was just fantastic. And also, I would just like to give Ms. Owens, where is she?
Hiding.
Congratulations, and thank you so much for supporting, your continued support of the CE program.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Other informational items from board members or student liaison?
Yes, I just want to remind everyone that we do have a social media website. We have a Twitter, and we also have a Facebook, and our Twitter name is @hcs__studentrep. So please follow us. We would like to get our followers up, please.
All right. I think I'm following you, but I'll make sure. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Any other informational items from members of the board? Thank you. If there are no further informational items, I'll entertain a motion at this time. Nobody wants to leave.
Move adjournment, Madam Chairman.
Well, we have, we would like to go into, there we go. Awesome.
I move that a certification be approved stating that the Hampton School Board, while in closed session...
Ask our certification.
Wrong button, sorry. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing employment matters involving division employees, which is authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Pearson and seconded by Ms. Henry that we convene in a closed session. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. This meeting will stand in recess for five minutes until we reconvene enclosed, and our guests from the public, thank you so much, and staff for joining us.
Have a good night.